Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
Acceptance of the minutes of December 9.
I'm going to approve the minutes of September 9.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes, but here's my question. When we talked about the animal control contract. So in the minutes, but our portion was going to be 7,400. Did we opt to just put half of that in the budget?
No, we upped it. It was already some in the line item. We just added to the line item.
So it makes the full 7,400 then?
You got it.
Yeah, okay, good. Anything else? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Proposed, they're adopted. Communications and public comments. All right, hearing none, let's go on to unfinished business. Solar project review approval.
Don't see anybody from the solar folks. They were supposed to give us an update this evening. Oh, yes, we do, right there.
I heard your cue.
Yeah, did you want to, is someone here from the project?
This is Martha Staskis, if you can hear me.
Yep, can hear you, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for having us on your agenda. So the last time we spoke, I heard the recommendation of the select board to reach, to talk with the neighbors. I have put in calls to Tanya and Lester White, although I haven't heard, I haven't had the calls returned. I also understand that Mr. Hopkins has heard from Tanya. I did speak with Clark Wells, who is not in a butter, but Tanya had spoken with him about possibly using part of his land. He lives on Newcombe Road. He's to the southwest of the parcel that we're looking at. And it's an acre. I really don't think it can help the project, but we had a good conversation about solar and he is supportive of what it is we're proposing to do. So the process that, I guess I'll jump to the process and please ask me questions if I'm missing something. The process that we're hoping to work through is to have the town designate the site as a preferred site for solar and then, and in part, we, I have spoken with Mr. Hodgkin about what the planning commission has done in the review of designated sites that they have identified as preferred. We, we aren't on their, we haven't met with them yet because their meeting was canceled the other day and so will be on the January agenda. And then the process that we would be looking at is to continue through this preferred siding process. We're continuing to, we have an interconnection application into Green Mountain Power. And we're putting together, we have an environmental, excuse me, historic and archaeological resource assessment going on with the Division of Historic Preservation. We have engineering, civil engineering occurring. Our environmental work has already been conducted and they're pulling together their report that would be incorporated into the layout. And then we would like to submit an application to the Public Utility Commission before February 1. And that process, that complete application would then, once it's deemed complete and addressing all of the Public Utility Commission criteria rules under 5.100, it would have a 30-day comment period for all to comment again. And then move, based upon those comments, we would have, we would address, the project would address any questions that came up or concerns that were raised or support that was given. And then the Public Utility Commission would rule as to whether it would receive a certificate of public good, which is the state level permit. We would, the project will then also have to get a stormwater permit for construction installation and that would be another step that we would take. Can I answer any questions?
Russ, what about the siding map that you showed me? Where does this project fit in or not?
It is in the preferred areas for further solar development.
I'd like to say also that the project will pay taxes to the town. The parcel pays property taxes, the array pays taxes and the project also pays, it's, it's based on production, but a contribution to the state education fund. So it is a benefit to the area economically.
Do you have an approximate idea of how much that would be?
The taxes would probably to the town would be in the range of $4,000 to $6,000. I'm estimating, I mean, it's based on an assessment.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. And do we know, there is there, I'm remembering a few years ago when you look at the renewable energy overview of the state, what our renewable energy percentage, do you remember that discussion?
I do.
Oh, yeah, okay, Sheldon, thank you. What are our contribution is and our target? Not remembering this very well, but.
We've reached our target by far.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Original target was 18%. I don't, I know we went past 18%. My question would be, you know, let's say you go 20 years, what happens to the solar panels? They must have to be replaced or do they get updated or what happens at the end of their lives? Do you just update them or what?
Yeah, very good question. The, the project is designed and the equipment is warranted. It was warranted, some of the equipment is warranted for 10 years, other pieces of it are warranted for 25 years. The project is designed for a useful life of 25 years. You know, sometimes I equate it, I'm not, you know, I'm not a mechanic, so I have to rely on a garage, but I equate it a bit to my car. If I have to change my tires, I change my tires, I change the oil. For the solar array, you change the panels if there's an issue with one of the panels. So the whole facility doesn't necessarily shut down. You might have a panel that has to be replaced. So the, you know, and I don't know if I'll be around in 25 years to be honest, but the Public Utility Commission requires the project to have a decommissioning plan. And, and that decommissioning plan has two specific, I think, specific criteria to what your concerns are. One is it has to remove everything to, let's see, what's the word? Reasonably practical extent as how it was found. Well, so we're not going to replace the trees that we cut down, but all of the hard man-made equipment, the posts, the underground wiring, the panels, the road, it's, which is a small driveway more like, would have to come out, would come out, once the project is met the end of its useful life. Alternatively, to your point, and this is what I see in other renewable projects, I'm afraid to say I've been around long enough that 25 years is passing, is that an application is made to amend the CPG and replace the equipment with state-of-the-art current equipment. So I would think that that would be more likely, the investment action is to probably replace the equipment because the site is already there, it's already producing. You know, it's easier to, I mean, why take out all that infrastructure if it's already there and it's, and it's a renewable energy generation source?
Thank you.
So. Go ahead.
Sorry, this is Kevin Hughes. I have a question, as you said, 25 years, I appreciate that, but I'm looking at it today. I mean, it's true, right? Everything that I read and understand, we really don't have a fungible mechanism for getting rid of this stuff when at that end of life. There really is no way to recycle this stuff. And I guess, you know, that would be my question because what I understand, the stuff is dirty to make and it's certainly just as dirty to get rid of.
So I think you're referring specifically just to the panel. The racking is obviously, it's galvanized metal, it's recyclable materials, the wiring is recyclable, copper is of value. So to your point, specifically on the panels and the cells within the panels, yes, I would agree.
So there really isn't, there really isn't a solution to plot to really recycle that stuff or get rid of it. Do you know where it goes? Does it go into the landfill? What happens to it?
I haven't had to cross that bridge yet for solar, so I can't answer it.
I know, I appreciate your honesty. I just, I just thought I'd beg the question, thank you.
It's a good one.
The planning commission's part in this, do they look at the project as part of the town plan?
That would be my understanding. I, I serve on the planning commission in Waterbury and that's how we look at it.
They would, absolutely.
Yeah. Any other comments? Do we want to vote? I guess my feeling is that it would still be too early until we heard the planning commission's view on this and also until all the neighbors had been reached and in contact with. So that would be my preference that we did not vote on this or did not give it our approval at this point.
Could I just add to the, regarding the neighbors, I, you know, I don't have phone numbers. I talked to Mr. Hodgkins about this. We have mailed the same notice that you folks got to every neighbor, to every adjoining landowner on December 7th, so that's been over a week. I did, you know, I know that Tanya has called and as I said, I spoke with Clark Wells. So I, I'm not sure, I'm, you know, in this day of COVID, it's a little bit, well, it's not a little bit, it's a lot more challenging to go knock on the door and I'm told to stay at home, but I think we've tried to make an attempt to reach the neighbors.
So, okay, thank you. Do we have a motion or not?
I move that we don't vote on this at this time. Table it until we have more information, please.
Second that.
Moved and seconded to table the solar project discussion, all in favor?
Until we have more information.
Till we have more information.
Could I, could I specifically ask, what is the specific information, more information you'd like so I can prepare that for you?
Well, I for one would like to hear the planning commission's view on it because they will presumably be, you know, looking at the town plan and how it fits into the town plan. That's, that's kind of what I would like to hear.
Sure.
The next meetings are, the planning commission is on the 11th and the select board's next meeting would be on the 13th.
Okay.
Then you do, you do have to make due diligence to get in touch with the neighbors. Be it whether we have COVID or not, I mean, that's, that's kind of your, you're, you need to do that, we don't.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I thought mailing the information packets with my phone number in it.
And I think you probably will hear from them. I mean, mail, mail's not even going through in seven days at this point in time, so.
Yeah, that's for sure. Ready to vote, more discussion? All in favor of the motion, which is to table a vote on this issue until we get more information, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? That's what we'll do.
Thank you for coming, yeah, Mart, appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
FY '22 final draft of the budget. Of course it'd be hours on the backhoe.
I got this from Chuck, 6,980 hours on the backhoe, which was requested last meeting.
And from the town manager's point of view, sorry Sue, is this a lot of hours? Is this a, you know, not a lot of hours? Where do we stand?
It's not a lot of hours, but a lot of years on the backhoe. Unfortunately, what we're seeing is the, and discussions with, that Chuck had with Nortrax, is that the value is dropping fast as the years go by. And we were actually toying with which one to request replacement first, a loader or that backhoe. And they overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly told us to do the backhoe because of the wear and tear on, on their different components.
So the truck replacement and the backhoe, that is the $145,000? Or?
That's the truck replacement, I believe.
Craig, you want to chime in on this?
Well, I gave it to you, I just thought you were bringing it, but basically the, they're trading a six-wheeler this year and it's like 133 and the tandem next year, it'll be like 130, I don't have right of mind, maybe like 135.
Yeah, 133, 264 for this FY '22 budget and next year would be 134, 620 if nothing changes.
We should be leveling up because like I said, they're finally trading in some expense, the trade-in, the trucks are going up every year, but their trade-in is getting worth more every year. So it should start to level off about that.
Susan?
Yep, go ahead. Yep.
I'm confused. So we budgeted last year 130,000 for FY '21. We're in FY '21, we decided to not buy a six-wheeler and buy a 10-wheeler that ended up being 157,000. So we found $27,000 worth of money laying around and we bought, did we purchase that truck already?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So we bought 150,000, 57,000 dollar truck. So we're putting in the budget for next year, your proposed is 145,000. Is that to replace another six-wheeler with a 10-wheeler? I don't, I don't understand what 133 and 135 is, what are you guys talking about?
Those would be the actual, when they came to me and asked me, what would those be? And it's, you know, I'm trying to be delicate about it because, you know, you're also asking me to go to bid, I've already told you what the price would be. But anyways, the six-wheeler for this coming year, for the six-wheeler would be like 133 because we were rounding them out and putting extra money in it to go towards the next budget, you know, whether it's a backhoe or something. But if, but Sheldon asked, what's the actual cost? Well, it's going to be 133, then the following year, the tandem would be 134.
FY '23, I mean.
Okay.
The following year, FY '23.
All right, so the six-wheeler we're trading, so we buy a new truck for 133 this coming year, FY '22. We're trading in a six-wheeler.
That's correct.
What are net purchase amount for that new six-wheeler next year?
That's the net.
133?
Yes.
After trade?
After trade, that's correct.
What's the trade-in amount?
Now you're asking me.
Well, I don't, that's fine. What is the list amount for the truck before trade?
Trade in, Nate, is $62,000.
That's the trade-in value?
That's correct.
That truck's 195,000 new, okay. So fine, we're buying 133,000 dollar net dollar amount. You've got 145,000 in the budget. How are you buying a backhoe also?
We're not proposing to do both this year, this coming year. We're trying to plan ahead so that when it comes due, that we do have the funds without taking a huge leap of, of debt or, or request for bigger and better payment.
Okay, so you're going to put 145,000 in for FY '22. You're going to buy 133,000 dollar truck.
Hey Nate, let me.
$12,000 left over.
Nate?
Another 130, 45,000 in FY '23 to then buy the backhoe. And according to your schedule, truck number three is due in 2023. So you just never have, it just doesn't seem like you have enough money. I mean, here I am talking about, I want you guys to start being, thinking, you know, where you're actually spending the money, but now in 2023, you're still not raising enough money.
You're correct. If, what, originally when they came to me and they asked, well, how much, with just a budget number and I said, I would assume 145 would cut it. But then when Sheldon asked, well, what's it exactly cost? And then we sat down and I gave him the exact cost for the next two. Then it was questionable if we did put 133 in one, or let's say we put 135 in it, then what do we do with the backhoe when it comes up? And that's the question, is what we're discussing.
So I, I think my point to this speaks to that this line item, this fund, every year we put 130 in it and every year we make sure we spend 130. This is a capital improvement fund, we're never gaining traction in this fund anywhere.
Correct.
Just, just food for thought, I guess. To, just a quick question to try to go off sidetrack a little bit here. September 23rd, select board meeting was the discussion about purchasing the truck and a motion was made and moved to send it out to bid. I don't see in any subsequent select board meetings, the opening of those bids and the voting on the purchase of the truck. Can somebody tell me where that happened?
We got two letters stating that they were not interested in competing with the local, local business. So we had no other bids.
Okay, so when, when was the vote to go ahead and approve the bid for whatever the company Craig works for is, ATG? I don't see that in the minutes anywhere. And I don't need to know that tonight, but you can get back to me.
We did, they did do it. I don't have it in front of me, okay?
All right, so we should do that. Have we purchased the truck already? The truck is in the garage, so to speak?
That's correct.
All right, we could still vote on that.
Can we back up on this 133,000 dollar truck they purchased then? Which I still haven't heard, but my question last meeting was, there was a lot of confusion about whether it was going to come with a plow or that it was going to come with a wing, you know, what it came with for, you know, what we're buying. And I still haven't heard that. All I'm hearing is we're buying a truck and after the last truck that we bought that changed, you know, in the course of a year, I'd like to know exactly what we're getting.
That's, that's a good question and that's, I gave that to Russ, but the last time when we had a meeting, I only sell the cabin chassis, I don't sell equipment. So that when he asked me what the final price is, well, then we got to go to the equipment guy. The equipment person quoted out to Chuck what he wanted and it's coming with a wing, it's coming with a plow, it's coming with a backup camera, it's coming with a few things that Chuck wanted with it. So the question.
And it's still going to be 133,000, correct?
That's correct.
We're sure.
I did it as a bid, but I have to be careful because then if we go out to bid, everybody know, but I, I really, at this point, I really wouldn't care. On it. On it. It's, it's all about, if we go to bid, it's all about who gives you the most for the trade. The town of Westminster, I always thought we treated special, to be honest with you, but I understand where we're at too.
So if we keep 145,000 in that fund, 133 would go to buy the truck, $12,000 would be held in reserve for, toward the backhoe next year or when we have enough money for it? Is that what we're saying?
That is correct.
Hey Susan, this is Cynthia.
Yep, go ahead Cynthia.
I'm, I don't know if I'm going to stick my foot in my mouth, but is anybody else feeling uncomfortable with the amount of information that Craig gives about trucks while he's on the board and works for the company we buy them for? It's really, I don't know, it's making me uncomfortable. I think it's making Craig uncomfortable actually because I think he's being put in a position to.
It, it is making me uncomfortable because if there's such a thing today as a quote in a bid, a quote, call up and here's your quote. A bid is like you're just asking me to lay my exact dollar amount out to you for what I'm going to bid so somebody can come and bid for a dollar less. You know, I think you have, I think somewhere you got to regroup and figure out how we, how are we going to handle this when this is the only truck dealer around, number one. And number two, it's the product that they want and how are you being, how you, how you monitoring that you're being treated right? That's a good question.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, if I, it, it makes me uncomfortable Craig, that you're super involved with all of this equip, managing of equipment and equipment. And I know that you're just trying to do it just to help, you know? I know I'm not accusing anybody of doing something that's not above board, but I just, I don't know, I think it puts you in a weird position with your work and a weird position as a board member. And I don't know.
That's why, and I appreciate that. And that's why I was more comfortable with just putting a dollar amount in there.
Yeah, I mean, I've never.
When the time comes to purchase the truck, you send it out to three different people or whatever and get three people and I'm fine with that. But they actually asked me to put the exact dollar amount in that budget line. Every other guy, every other person would know what it is. And what happens in certain towns, they do that, they'll call me up and what's, it's 133, 75. Then they go to the voters and say, do you, I want your approval to buy a Weston Star truck for 133 and so then it doesn't go to bid because the voters specifically told you that's what they wanted. You see what I'm saying? But we don't, we do it more like what Vermont does where they just put a line in and the voters say, yes, don't spend more than 145, then we put it out to bid. It's two different ways of doing it.
Yeah, okay.
So it'd be a better way, and we talked about, about this at one point, of putting that in the budget instead of actually having a reserve fund or maybe separately, that this is what we're buying and this is how much roughly, I mean, this is how much we're budgeting because we think this is what it will cost. Would that be better for you, better for us?
You know, you're talking about sometimes a year and a half away. So it's really difficult when you put, when you ask for the exact, if you put a, not to exceed, what has happened with several towns, I'll give you an example, they went into, let's say we put 145 and then all of a suddenly, meanwhile, what happened was they, they blew an engine in a one ton, so they decided not to buy the bigger one and buy the smaller one. Well, now they got extra money. You see what I'm saying? So you kind of do the capital line item, it was capital line item with, with what we're starting to do by looking at all this equipment and where are we going and which year are we going to spend the money at?
Right. Yeah, that certainly takes more sense to me, but.
Can I say something?
Yep.
This is Fran. I'm just responding.
Um, I, I'm just responding, um, because when Cynthia brought that up, I have always been uncomfortable the way that we're buying vehicles through Craig's, where Craig works. And, and I'm not insinuating that anything underhanded or, um, overhanded or anything is going on, but we never get to see the letters that we, or, or the, um, the notices that we send out asking for, asking other businesses if they're interested in selling to us, and we never see the responses from these business. We just always are buying a new vehicle through Craig's business. It's not his business, but you know what I mean?
Right. Well.
Always made me uncomfortable, and I don't, I, I, I'm not pinning on it on anything specific, it's just doesn't feel comfortable to me.
It is, it's a little difficult, too, if I can explain it one more time. And that is, um, going back even when Mark was here, the, so about sixty percent of the product that they're buying is, is, is my company, and forty percent is the equipment. And the equipment people will not bid against each other. So it would always bother me that, okay, we gotta go to bid, but I'm going, forty percent of it is equipment, and they don't bid. They tell you the cost and that's it. So what it did was convince Mark to switch from one brand to another, so it's now quite a bit less for this brand, because he's buying it factory direct. But when you go out to bid, it's not just the truck. It's the equipment also, and you have to say, well, will you even entertain buying another brand? And so it's a little more difficult than just going down to the Ford dealer and buying a Ford pickup, you know? But hopefully.
Yeah. Go ahead Craig.
I said, hopefully, we're, I'm in the middle, I'm trying to hire another sales guy, and when it does, then I can recluse myself from, uh, from being involved with the town of Westminster.
I was gonna ask you if there was someone else in your company that could sort of serve as the information, uh, bid person.
Well, it's a, it's, it's, it's kind of a, well, it's an odd one. We have fourteen sales persons, but I'm in charge of all munis. So that answers your question. So, the, when I say that, I don't always look at how they're bidding, but I look at all their trades, and I put, I'm the one that puts their numbers on it. And I've always kind of had a thing for giving more money than I should, and they allowed me for Westminster. And, uh, I do the same for Rockingham, to be honest with you. I, those two towns, I kind of take care of. Let's put it that way. On it.
May I, may I ask another question?
Yep, go ahead Fran.
I, I'm just wondering, uh, this is something that I've always wondered about. Do you, Craig, get a commission on any vehicles that Westminster buys through the company you work for?
No, well, they pay me a fee, but it's not on a commission on how much I sell it for. That's all. They give me, they give me a, every vehicle I sell, I get something. But doesn't, but outside of that.
So if you sell it for more, you get a higher commission, yeah.
Right. On the other towns I do. On, all the other towns, I, I get a percentage or whatever it is, but not. Originally, if you look at it, my name's not even on it, and I always had the, the owner or one of the sales managers do it. But this last few years, we've got purchase, and they're in Massachusetts, and they don't even know. And they're saying, well, just go ahead and do it. I said, well, it does put me in a bad position. And if you look, my name is not anywhere on it, but I'm just being honest with you, I'm the one that's behind the sales managers here, who's actually putting the numbers on it.
So let's continue this discussion at some other, let's, let's get the budget going here, so, thank you Craig, thank you Fran. So a hundred and forty-five thousand in the equipment budget, do you wanna make it a hundred and thirty-three and worry about the backhoe next year? I mean, I, I, I think it's perfectly legitimate to, um, keep the extra money in there for the backhoe as long as it's that's what we're buying.
It's not a foolish idea, because if something happens to the trade, and instead of putting money into you, you take a little less for the trade, and kind of whatever. Especially if you're gonna still go to bid.
Yeah.
On it. The thing about the trucks is it comes out to where trading maybe seven years, because that's what is coming with a full seven-year warranty. The backhoe and the loader, a lot of times in the past, we borrowed the money because we've keeping those for ten or fifteen years. So that is another choice, instead of getting hit at once, you would actually borrow the money for the backhoe and spread it out over five or eight years.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that makes sense. And maybe that will, is what it will come to.
Well, what it gives you, it, what if you did the, if you look at the score going down through it, if you did it that way, and you borrowed the money for the fiscal year twenty-three for the backhoe, the next year, you've got another tandem for tandem, you'll probably be around one thirty-five, one forty. Then the following year, you're gonna drop way down to probably around ninety-five to a hundred, so it gives you extra if you wanted to turn around and start thinking about paying the backhoe off sooner or building up for the loader.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any more discussion?
Yeah, um, sorry, sir, I just wanted to get a, a quick thing. I was gonna speak before.
Yeah.
Um, we authorized a new purchasing policy for the town, or at least we renovated it on June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. Um, and I'm here to lecture myself only, no one else. Um, because folks have come up to me and said, hey, look, you know, I voted for you. There needs to be more transparency, more accuracy in what you're doing. So I can only apologize for myself, and I intend to do that to everybody right now. And especially for the public, these are our fellow neighbors and taxpayers. So I can appreciate the concern that comes with this. Our purchasing policy is pretty clear, we all signed it, with the exception of Toby, who was absent, that's fine. Um, Nate had brought up the specific point uh, that he just also went back on, that we have a policy regarding bids. If we are not going to, if we're gonna call an audible, which is, which is certainly possible in any particular um, case, where we're abiding by Article Four of our own policy, which everyone here signed, then if we're gonna make that decision, again, I'm talking about myself, and I apologized to everybody, then we should hold ourselves to account and make sure that we disclose the fact that we moved either with more expeditious speed, because we didn't have viable bidders, and therefore at least make that planning clear to every one of our fellow taxpayers before we get to town meeting. So at least we can, they can know this is the reason we did it. Okay, and this is the reason we might do it in the future. Um, because one of the things that I got out of our terrific meeting on Friday on the control issues um, from VCLT, is at the end of the day, the only recourse our fellow neighbors have, who are the taxpayers, they're paying for. So it's not unreasonable for them to come to me and say, you know, Kevin, I don't like what you're doing over there. I don't know what's going on. And at the end of the day, it's not to put anyone at it, at, at a, at a, um, you know, on the wrong spot. If Craig can provide us with the best price and the best vehicle, because he's the best vendor, I think everyone's all, I think most people are gonna be okay with that. Um, at the end of the day, us making sure that we are specifically stating, look, this is the policy, we put it out to bid, we didn't get those bids, or those bids are not appropriate here based on the fact that time, execution, the vendor quality, everything in Article Four matches up to Craig's company, I'm okay with that. And I'll tell everyone right now, I'm okay with that in front of town hall. Because at the end of the day, you know, if it's not good enough, then I'm not gonna be on the board, right? And other people aren't gonna be on the board. Um, but we should be as transparent as possible to make sure that if we're gonna spend that money this year and next year, backhoe, six-wheeler, ten-wheeler, not only should the amount of money be appropriately listed, but we should also be litigating and putting it down, so everyone knows that, yes, we're, we expect a certain amount of money for our trade. So that it's transparent as we receive this for town property, we expect to allocate this much in town property, and if something occurs where this year we decide to go from six to ten, and that makes sense based on the expertise of the men and women at the town, the lodge, and elsewhere, then we can do it, but at least we said it, and at least we followed procedure, and at least all of our taxpayers are clear, we made this decision, and that way it rests based on what we specifically said. And I, and I agree with Nate in that regard, and I am sorry, that should have been something that I should have spoke up on, and I did not. So on behalf of the board and the fellow taxpayers, I'm gonna apologize for that. Um, and in future, we should be following this particular rule, which we adopted very recently, June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, the town of Westminster, Miss, Westminster's purchasing policy. Because I, I don't see any differential. In the end, we're still gonna move through with the allotted, um, modernization program to keep our trucks and our, our trucks up to date, our personnel safe, people, uh, on the road safe, and making sure that we're getting the best, though, the taxpayers have a right to ask for the best bang for their buck. And I think if we could be more transparent, which I intend to be, um, I'm gonna do that going forward. I apologize for the blubbiation, everybody, I just wanted to make sure I said that. Thank you.
So I think we have to figure out where we put that into the process of when we, um.
Can I throw something else out to you while you're there, while, while we're all having an honest discussion?
Yep, go ahead Craig.
If, if we're gonna, and I, I have no problem with us going to bid. If we're gonna go to bid, then we should put the one forty-five, so that we're not laying our hands down to what exactly that would go for. It's not fair to my company. You see what I'm saying? However, to throw the kinker in this whole thing, um, if you, if you even said, go order the truck today for me, the buck, and then say, put a Viking body equipment on it, you're not gonna see it next year anyways. I'm gonna be honest with you. We're sold out for the whole year. That's why we're not doing much for bidding anymore, because I have eighteen towns that have already called me and said, just put the truck on order, just, we'll figure it out. Because the order bank went nuts, uh, the, the economy somehow is, is whacked out. And so it's, it's not a problem. It's still, I would suggest, put the money in there, wait till we get to, past town meeting, put it out to, to bid. In the, in the bid, you could say, it's gotta be available this year, and whoever ordered some trucks would, would actually have, to be honest with you.
And then, as Kevin was making clear, even if we get only one bid, then, um, let's make that clear, open the bid, even if there's only one bid, and make it a public, uh, a public event, essentially. Document.
That's correct.
Or the letters that say they're not gonna bid.
Yeah, including those, right. Because we had those, I mean, we talked about those in public meeting, I think, the letters from the two companies that said they were not gonna bid.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Susan, can I, this is Cynthia, can I, is it my turn?
Yeah, go ahead, your turn.
So I appreciate Kevin, what you said, and I think that the point that you're trying to make is a really good one, that I think all we're asking for you guys to do is just follow the procedure, and it sounds like that's what you're what, what you're talking about. So the, my question is about the budget. At the meeting the other night, I watched the meeting from last week, and there was a comment made regarding the surplus. And I, the comment was something like, um, a, and I'm assuming a lot of it has to do with Nate and, uh, my participation, and, you know, going line by line and, and talking about different line items, that we're only concerned about the expense side, that you guys are over-budgeting on the expenses, but that the surplus is really being generated by the unexpected revenues. That, that's where, so that's what I understood to be said, and I just want it to be made really clear that if you look at last year's audit, that, the one that just ended in June, your unexpected revenues were only seventeen thousand dollars over what you budgeted. But your expenses were underspent by a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So when I hear that the surpluses are coming from unexpected revenues, there may be years that that's true, but that's not that's not true from last year. So I just want to make sure that that's known and that in adopting this budget, and I, I'm not gonna pick it apart, I know, you know, I know Nate has asked a lot of really good questions, but my concern is, is that there's things that are being budgeted for, and I'm gonna pick on the highway, because obviously their biggest part of our budget is the highway, that we get grants for projects, and an example is I heard, I heard Russ say that we might be expecting a grant for a, what did you say, the a gravel, I can't, I don't know the terminology. What was it, Craig, that you said? I mean, Russ, erosion grant.
Yep, yep. That's one of them.
Oh, my question is, is where in the expenditure side are you budgeting for that specific project that you're expecting a grant for? Like, what is, what is the project that you think you're gonna get that grant for?
Let me grab my sheet, just a second.
I promise I'll get to a point to try to make, I just, because this, this, what, the point I'm gonna try to make is one that just really sticks with me every year, and I just wanna make sure that people under.
Sure, which one you're.
To projects.
I'm not which, I'm not sure which one you're, you're, um, asking about, but we, uh, slated for next year is what we, if we get these grants, this is what we, we, we'll be doing. Forest Road was just completed, um, with two different years' grants. Quarry Road is coming up next year, it's, it's from the Grants and Aid. Um, it's roughly twenty-two thousand dollars.
Um, so, but we can, you don't have to give me every one of them, but let's use that one as an example. Is that money currently budgeted in your highway expense lines?
No, because it's not guaranteed. We won't know until State of Vermont, um, uh, votes and approves their budget.
Okay.
Get that information until spring.
The projects that you might be getting grants for, you do not have in the budget already.
No.
But if I look at the highway budget, it's underspent, so I would expect when I see a grant coming in, somewhere along the way, the highway budget should be overspent. So like last year, I look at the, you got a twenty-three thousand dollar grant, but when I look at the highway department, their, the highway department overall is underspent. Uh, and let me, I'll, I'll move on, but my point is, is I'm concerned that you're budgeting money in the highway, we're paying property taxes for that budget, then you're also getting a grant for that same money that we just paid for in taxes. And to me, that's just kind of double, doubling up what we're paying. I mean, a grant.
If we were given it in black and white, that we could, uh, count on it and bank on it, absolutely. But these don't come, come apparent until after this budget has been approved.
No, I know, and as long as you're telling me that those specific projects are not included in the already budgeted highway budget, and if you don't get the grant, you will not do the work.
That's correct.
Then I guess that answers my question. I, I, I have to question that, that some of them, I don't know, I, I, just the highway budget, just it's underspent, so I, I don't know.
So so I have a quick question, too. So for a grant like erosion grant, uh, does it, does that cover labor as well as equipment, or does the labor come from our road crew, essentially?
Depends on which grant you're talking about, but there's a match, so it will, they, they have to approve the project, they have to approve the expenditure, and, and then we have to show a match. Typically, um, they let us do, uh, machines and, and time.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes we, we have to throw cash at it. Um, and that comes with, depending on what the project is.
Yeah.
Um, we have a huge culvert, um, that we need to replace, um, on Windmill Hill Road South, and that is one of the uh, Better Roads Grants that I've applied for, um, just recently. And it is a roughly a sixty thousand dollar job. Um, the grant is for, uh, an eighty-twenty, um, match, and, um, if we get it, we're planning on doing that ourselves, um, to save the taxpayers' money, because we did get a, an estimate um, of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we thought that was extremely high, and went um, and did our, our own due diligence on, on, uh, and did our own due diligence on bidding it, and we know we can save taxpayers' dollars by doing it ourselves. And time will tell, but it's not in the budget. We can't count on that until probably, I'm going to say February or March, before that will actually come to us in a letter of denial or to a positive.
Okay, so that answers that question. I just want to, yeah, I just wanted to be sure that those projects were not being budgeted, and then we were also getting a grant. So I guess the only suggestion that I would have maybe for future is I really think that at some point you should pull this whole highway budget right out of your out, and let the highway stand alone as its own fund. And then, these questions of of surpluses in the highway actually become just highway money. And because what I worry about is that we are doing really good in the highway, and like you said, you are trying to, you know, do due diligence and save money and do the work yourself so that our match doesn't come from cash, it's really from wages, and I get all that. But then that savings goes into the general fund surplus, and it gets used for town hall or something else, and I really think that money should stay with the highway. Because then that does answer some of those questions of, okay, maybe we do need a piece of equipment, and we don't need to budget so much to transfer to a to a capital fund. We've got a surplus because the year wasn't so bad. So it's just a suggestion for the future to just pull that whole highway right out of there and just let it stand alone as its own fund.
So the town would vote on two budgets, essentially, the town budget and the road budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Does that happen in other towns, Cynthia?
Yeah, a lot.
That's not a bad idea, actually, because you're right. You know, you take the office staff and all that, you kind of know what it is beginning to the end of the year, but boy, you get into the salt and sand and the overtime, and one year it can be, you just really spend a lot. Another year, like you said, it's an easy winner, and you get in it with extra money, you know? That makes some sense, it really does.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not an extremely difficult thing to do as far as just the mechanics of it. But I just, I feel like a lot of the surplus does come from that. And like you said, if you have a bad winter, then, I mean, well, if you have a deficit, you got to handle that too in a highway, which can happen, but it still just keeps it just a little bit cleaner. So that's just a suggestion, and maybe some of these questions like I asked might go away, I don't know, but that's it, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cynthia, really.
So the equipment budget. Do we want to leave it a hundred and forty five thousand? I guess so, not hearing anything to the contrary. And I think we've answered all the questions about the expenses, but I do have one question, and I I guess I just don't know enough about it, but I do want to I do want to put the, take the money from our surplus a certain amount to give back to the taxpayers and put it into the revenue budget.
That's down further in the agenda.
But that's not going to affect the expenditure budget at all if we do that, if we put that into the revenue and not into saying article.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's all clear. All right. Are you ready to vote on the budget? We have a motion.
I'm not so sure I know what the bottom line is now. Is it the two two eight eight, one four five?
I believe that's right, Russ, isn't it?
That's correct, to date.
Yeah.
You have a lot of pending with appropriations and the library.
Right.
Be articles in the warning.
But those are the articles, but just the budget that we vote to adopt, it's the two million, two hundred and eighty eight thousand, one hundred and forty five dollars.
And to be honest, that isn't quite.
Confused again, Russ. The year before, the two million, three one three does have the articles in it?
That's correct.
So the two two eight eight, if we were to add the articles to it, does that go over the two three one three?
It, yes, by about ten thousand dollars.
So basically, if the voters passed everything, we'd be up about ten thousand on expenditure.
That's correct.
On expenditure.
That's with the seven thousand from the library, the brand new request.
With all, yeah, right, with all the articles, with everything that everybody's requesting, it would be up about ten thousand.
We have the same discussion every year. The, the equipment and the bridge are separate articles in the warning. So please remember that, that these will be discussions on the floor of the town meeting.
So why do you guys put them in that budget every year? Just take them, every year we have this same confused discussion.
Because they want apples for apples, and that is surely not apples for apples, so that's why I leave them there, but I make sure I put this note in it that to make sure that these are not a given, but they are part of the budget, so they can see.
Well, none of it's a given, Russ. I mean, we could change every number on the floor if we wanted to.
You're right.
You guys are just voting on the expenditures that you're asking to put on town meeting as the proposed budget, and then you have separate articles that we vote. It's very confusing. Every year we have the same conversation. And I think that the discussion about the hundred and forty five really should have come up when you guys were creating the articles, because it's a whole separate article. But it's, I mean, I understand what you're doing, but it's, every year it's the same conversation.
And that would be did over the bridge fund, too, the fifteen thousand for the bridge fund.
So we would then take the two, the one forty five and the fifteen off, would lower the two two eight eight down number, and then we would come back and say, that's what we're voting for today, and then each article we'd add back. But in this case, we've added the one forty five and the fifteen already, because it came from us. Is that why we're thinking it that way?
Right, no one, yes, I'm assuming that's why.
I'm assuming that's right, because we, the select board have asked for it, where the other articles, the group has asked for it. I guess.
But it certainly makes much more sense since we have the whole separate warning with the articles. If we take the two hundred, two million, two hundred and eighty eight thousand, subtract the, so I'm going to add this, one hundred and sixty thousand.
It's two million, one hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and forty five dollars.
And that's what we vote on as the general fund budget.
Right. Let's do it that way. I think, I agree with Cynthia, it's too confusing. And then we, the articles, we're just, we're going to add them all up for the voters, to tell them what their taxes would be anyways. So I'll move that we pass the expenditure budget right now of two million, one hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and forty five dollars.
Do I have a second?
Forty five or forty four? I thought they said forty five.
Forty five.
Forty five.
Does anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Moved by Craig, seconded by Sheldon to adopt a budget of two million, one hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and forty five dollars. Is there any more discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We have a budget. All right, on to the revenue. Discussion of the revenue. And I guess.
So I'm trying to make it apples for apples, so I've got to take that away from it. One, seven, six, four, two sixty five, minus the hundred and sixty. So the top line should be one million, six hundred and four thousand, two sixty five.
This is under, and when you say the top line, what do you mean?
Property taxes, the only one that can vary, vary with.
They lowered the property tax by that that one sixty, one sixty thousand. Yeah, that's what I came up with, too.
One six oh four, two six five.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
That's for twenty one.
Twenty two, FY twenty two.
So it's so that's where the one six oh four.
Yeah, where it says one million, seven hundred and sixty four thousand, yeah, you got that, okay. Okay. And now we can discuss end of year surplus, what we could return to the taxpayers.
I have a quick thing about that before you go in. So I looked at the surplus and read the minutes from the last meeting, and I understand that two hundred and fifty of it is part of that reserve fund balance policy.
Right.
But you guys didn't mention that last year at town meeting, we voted to use a hundred thousand dollars of that to reduce our property taxes for the year we're in now.
Right.
So you've got to deduct that, so you have a hundred and forty five thousand left. Not two forty five.
Mm-hmm, because that hundred thousand goes into FY twenty two?
Right, so when they set the property tax rate this year, they should have reduced the amount to raise by taxes by that hundred thousand, and that's going to take from the surplus we had that carried forward from June thirtieth of twenty.
That's confusing. So even though we did it for fiscal year twenty one, we're taking it out of fiscal year twenty two?
Well, because, so think of it this way, Craig, at June thirty, you had you had four hundred and ninety five thousand, you're going to keep two hundred and fifty sitting in your checking account, and then you're going to use a hundred thousand of it to help fund the taxpayers' tax rate for the year that we're currently in.
I was thinking. Okay.
Does that make sense?
Now, at the voters' air, when we told them to move the hundred, it doesn't go into the fiscal twenty two, it went back into fiscal twenty one?
No, huh?
No, I had to come in. Sorry, go ahead.
The hundred thousand is to offset our taxes for fiscal twenty one, which is the year we're in now, and the tax bill we just are paying on now.
Right, I understand that. But this is twenty two.
Was that hundred thousand dollars applied to the current tax rate, Russ?
I'm assuming so. I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, I'm I'm pretty positive it did, but I don't have the evidence in front of me.
Okay, you'll make sure of that?
I will.
Okay, so the reimbursement, we voted at the meeting last spring, should have gone into the current, our current tax bill. But the one that we're talking about now would go to reduce property taxes in FY twenty two. Yes. Yeah, exactly, so.
Right, I was just worried that you were basing what you might give us back off of a higher number than what you really have.
I hate to say it, but Cynthia, you know more about that than I do. Now you got confused.
Total surplus, and then we have the reserve fund and the, well, the total reserve fund, two hundred and fifty, so then we have two hundred and forty five thousand left. Reimbursement, right, and if we start, I mean, I prefer to start putting into the revenue, giving back a hundred thousand, reimbursing by a hundred thousand, and then decide what we're going to do with a hundred and forty five thousand.
Right, but you don't have two hundred and forty five thousand, that's my point.
That's what she keeps saying. There's only a hundred and forty five, and if we spent a hundred and forty five, it doesn't leave us the hundred thousand to give back. Because if we.
The two forty five, you have to take the hundred thousand off that kept there to go against our taxes for the year we're in now. So you've got the two forty five minus the hundred thousand. It's hard because it's not a physical, like, transaction that you see.
So what's the, what's the ninety thousand taxpayer reimbursement? Where's the ninety thousand coming from?
Well, I think that was someone's attempt to divvy out this.
Yeah, that is not, that's just a suggestion, but, so when the, when the audit is finished on June thirtieth, that hundred thousand dollars has not been transferred essentially into taxpayer reimbursement. That's what you're saying.
Right, right, because you don't, there's no physical, like, transaction that you see. It just gets done during that calculation of your tax rate.
Right. And, right, and because the property tax bill essentially has not been calculated at that point. Okay, so if that's the case, then we have a hundred and forty five thousand to decide if we're going to reduce taxes for the next year, FY twenty two.
Let's go back to the reserve fund. We don't necessarily have to put the two fifty. We could put one fifty in if we wanted to.
Well, no, because there's the hundred thousand for the capital, not capital, but the operating capital
Right.
that we always have, and we voted to put a hundred and fifty thousand into the emergency reserve fund, and we can't take that out unless there's an emergency, so that has to stay there.
Well, this, this line says reserve fund balance.
Right, voted amount, two hundred and fifty thousand. That's there.
Can't touch it, is what you're saying.
Right, that's what we voted, and unless there's an emergency, it has to stay there. Right, yes, yeah. We can't, that's what we voted, and that's why I would not put any more money into that fund. I think that's sufficient right there, because you can't take it out unless there's an emergency. It's there. You got to have it. So, so the discussion is, it's a hundred and forty five thousand dollars, the, what we have talked about is taxpayer reimbursement. We've talked about putting money into the, more money, more money into the bridge fund, money into the garage fund, which we, is only about sixty three thousand dollars, whether to finish the town hall renovation, the stuff that we took out, the bathrooms in the kitchen and the front entrance. And there's also some, oh, the twenty five thousand, what is that? Is that to pay for the ten wheeler? What is the twenty five thousand for the equipment fund, Russ?
Again, if you guys did, that was just an option I threw out there, just trying to make sure the conversation was had, that if you didn't want to raise the budget or the request for the article, then you could take it through a surplus.
Let's skip that.
Since you've taken that, that one should be gone now.
Plus, it would get even more confusing, so let's.
Yeah, that's fine.
What's your pleasure?
I, I think we should take the twenty five, and I think we should take the sixty out since we only have a hundred and forty five.
The sixty for what?
The wall. I don't think it has.
Yeah, it's looking better than it looked before, I want to say. I don't know who fixed it, but it's looking better. Not totally perfect, but so I have an agreement there.
Well, that's eighty five thousand.
We're starting that way, I'm not.
I guess we got to have the discussion, do we really want to spend any more money on the town hall to start with?
Yeah. So forty five thousand would essentially finish the job. It would renovate those bathrooms and the kitchen and fix.
I have new information from our contractor, which we would definitely be wise to place this one back out to bid, because it's been so long. But his breakdown of what he pulled out was twenty thousand, was the two existing bathrooms. The kitchen was fourteen, two hundred, and the front entrance, which was the walls, floor finish, stairs and upstairs, walls and floor finish, was thirty five thousand. So, yeah, that's a lot of, thirty four, two, it is sixty nine, two.
Susan.
The front foyer, not now, the other two, which are in the process of, you know, in the construction, is thirty five, thirty four, two, exactly.
Yeah, go ahead, Cynthia.
So when we went to town meeting last year and said. So when we went to town meeting last year and said, okay, tell us how much we're going to need to finish this project, let's just get it done. Was this not part of it? I don't understand where this all of a sudden came from. And is there not a bathroom in that town hall right now? I don't understand, there's a handicap bathroom, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's a bathroom, there are, we took the, because the project was getting so expensive, we removed that because the renovating the bathrooms, which the other two bathrooms, they're there, they're just old, you know, and there's the kitchen, so. I would say there's nothing that needs to be done to use the town hall. I mean, you could, could leave it, it's just, you know, not a total renovation, I guess, so. Am I, is that accurate? Am I giving an accurate representation, essentially?
Yes.
Sort of, okay. Yeah, but now that's even more expensive, so.
And then as far as these other little pockets of money that you're talking about using the surplus, these will become articles on the warning.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah. And, and the, the argument, or the argument was, you know, the bridge fund to put more money into the bridge fund because we have a couple of expensive bridges coming up. And the garage fund, we're going to need to do work on the town garage, we haven't done very much on it and that fund is only $63,000, so. So I guess the question is, yeah, we're still the same question, what would you like to do with the surplus? I mean, I certainly want to give some money back to the taxpayer.
I, I'll throw out my suggestions, we move along, I would say, so we, Cynthia knows, knows that number real well, but I, so we're left with 145,118. If we did the 35 and we threw 10 at the bridge fund and gave the rest back to the voters, that would be giving the 100,000 back to the voters.
Okay, so wait a minute, what did you say Craig? Say those suggestions again.
35 for the, for the, throw out the town hall, whether he does the bathrooms and the kitchen or he does the, but put 35 for the town hall, put 10 for the bridge, that will leave you just about $100,000 to give back to the voters.
And none for the town garage, essentially?
Right now, I wouldn't think so, I think we can get by another year easily.
I have serious town hall renovation fatigue, to be honest with you. So I, it's up to you guys, you can ask us if that's what you want to do and maybe other people will disagree with me, but this was a huge conversation last year and what will it take to finish that project and now we're being asked for another $69,000 is what Russ just said. He said go out to bid maybe again, but I, I think people, I, I am seriously over that town hall.
Well, it's been 20 years, so yeah, but, so if we put 35,000, then we would essentially go out to bid and see if it came in on that or under that, is that how that would work?
Yeah, I mean.
We know we can get it done for 35, but if you get it a, a better bid, of course, then you're.
And that would not finish it, is what you're saying, probably.
It won't do the front entrance, um, at all.
So we would decide what we needed to do, we could do the front entrance and not do the.
Not the $14,000 kitchen.
The kitchen is not an essential utility for our town hall, is that correct?
The kitchen?
I agree.
Right.
Okay.
I'm asking, is that something that we have to have?
No, we have to have the space, but we, we've got space.
And the bathroom, the two existing bathrooms, where there's a $20,000 request, are the bathrooms functional for both town personnel and for guests and/or taxpayers or anyone else who's coming in who has to use the lavatory, are they functional and are they, you know, are they safe, are they up to code, could people just use them as they exist now, or we just talking about paint and a few other ancillaries?
They're not to code, but they're not being renovated, they, so they, they comply. So, um, yes, we can, we could get away with it for another few years.
And the, and the presentation, I didn't mean to interrupt you, the presentation for, which is the foyer, obviously the front, which is the walls, the floor, the finish, stairs that need to be completed, whatever's left, you're saying we're not going to get that done, which is the presentation for 35, less than 35 grand?
I thought that price was inflated. For, for paint and actually varnishing the floor that's there and redoing the stairs, fixing a crack in the plaster, I, I thought that was expensive, but.
I would rather do that than the kitchen and the bathrooms, to tell you the truth, since we have a good bathroom, but that's just my opinion.
So.
I totally agree about that.
35 as a base, right, if you use the 35, you're saying we could put that out to bid, we'll say we put that out to bid, sorry Toby, I didn't mean to interrupt you, 35,000 to bid and then you think we could probably get it lower than that, right?
I do.
I would be for that, that, no, you know, the bathrooms will have to be, since they're functional, they should stay, the kitchen needs to be tabled and we should rebid for a better option on the conclusion of the presentation of the building, given that we put that much money into it.
Yeah.
If we stay, so, I understand, if we go with the 35 and let's say he comes in at 25, we could take 10 and fix up one of the bathrooms as long, we got to still come up with a dollar amount, unless you're talking about cutting the 35 down.
No, I think you're talking about putting 35 as the article on the warning.
Okay, that's where.
Get and start with the foyer, I would be in favor of that. 10,000 into the bridge, I, I guess I would be, you know, I would like to put some money into the garage at some point and.
I think the, the bridge, we know that it's just a repair, we have to do it, we're, the garage, I think we need to come back with a plan that's tell the voters eventually, you know, that we're going to do X, Y, Z to this building and we need to start to repair, but we really don't have a good plan right at this minute. But that's the only reason why I was thinking that the bridge fund is definitely going to be coming at us.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm for at least giving 100,000 back every year, I just think it's important.
Yeah.
I am too.
Okay. So those are current suggestions, $35,000 to renovate further renovations on the town hall, $10,000 into the bridge fund and $100,000 for taxpayer reimbursement. And so, so actually the 100,000 would go into the revenue side of the budget, which we would vote on and then the other two would go on to the warning, if I understand correctly. More discussion, Toby, what are your thoughts?
I, I think, I'm with you on that. And I'll make the motion.
Yeah. I mean, just Mr. Beebe, how do you feel?
I'm all right with it so far.
Okay. All right, so Toby's ready to make a motion, this would, we need a motion for the overall revenue or just to put the 100,000 into the revenue side of the budget and then vote on the revenue?
Well, I, how should we do it? Is it better to do, let's do them separately.
Okay. So make, so.
I'll make a motion that we put $100,000 into refund on taxes.
From.
Seconded.
Yeah, so I've been. Pardon?
From the surplus.
$100,000 from the FY21 surplus. I want to say that correctly, into the revenue budget for FY22. Moved and seconded. Yeah.
Yeah.
Moved by Toby, seconded for Kevin, by Kevin, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We've added that, okay. Is there any more discussion on the revenue?
Well, just so I don't get lost, that means we're going to go back and we'd lower that 1,604265 to 1,504265, is that what we're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay. Long as we're all on the same page.
Questions, discussion, we went over this last meeting, so, okay. I guess I'd entertain a motion to adopt the revenue budget.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we adopt the revenue tax property, taxes for the town of Westminster for fiscal year 22 for 1,504,200, no, 1,504265.
Yeah.
Seconded.
Moved by Craig, seconded by Kevin to adopt the revenue of 1,504,265 to be raised by property taxes in FY22. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you. Draft the new personnel policy.
Um, I got to get together with Kevin and obviously what's there, but I think we're to a point, I'll, I'll discuss with Kevin this next couple of weeks and I think we need to come back to some things. I've been comparing our personal prop, our policy compared to Rafton's, Rockingham and Putney and I got some concerns over a couple of things and one of them is we have nothing about the COVID-19 in there, so I'm trying to get something from VLCT. Hopefully I'll get together with Kevin, we can kind of hash it out and come back for some help from the select board where we want to go.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me know when you're, when you want me around, that's fine, that's great, thank you.
Okay, that's all I'm waiting, I got one more thing and I got all of them, I'll sit down, we'll, we'll hook up somehow, okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
School withdrawal, withdrawal from the consolidated district update.
We now know that there's going to be an informational meeting on December 29th. I don't have any of the particulars, but that has been given to us. And of course, the town meeting for them is January 5th.
Okay, thank you, any other discussion? New business, first look at the warning.
This was just the first attempt to show you how many we have. Now we'll have to add the, of course, the two numbers that you just added from the revenue to give back from the surplus, I should say.
Yeah. Okay, so, and we have to pass, approve this by 14th of January, is that why it's on here, is that the date of that meeting?
You have to approve this so that it can go into the town report by the January 13th meeting, yes. By that time, we should have all of the articles that are needed.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Updates to the town meeting from the state, we know anymore?
We do not, but one of the interesting discussions is to push back town meeting for a month or two. Creating the opportunity to meet outside or to give us a chance to get the virus under wraps with, with the the information and the, and the products that are out there now.
I think that a new thing has decided to do theirs by the Australian ballot.
And that is definitely a possibility.
And that's going to be done in February, I guess.
And how is their discussion going to go, is there going to be some, there will be no discussion?
I don't think so. I, I, I just read, read it in the newspaper.
So how would you do, I saw that, but how would you do Article 16? It says to transition any other business to be brought up and I'm thinking, well, all the other articles, you could, you know, they're a dollar, you vote for it, but how do you vote for a discussion?
And how do you discuss the articles in open meeting too, that's.
Yeah.
I, I assume that everybody would have a, an informational meeting prior to an Australian ballot, I mean, you can't just throw out the information without having, you know, an absolute chance to weigh in on it.
So if we did an Australian ballot, there's no way you could amend an article? Is that correct?
At the informational meeting, they could, they could literally discuss what they would like to see and then you would have to take it under advisement to change the.
Right.
The article.
Would that meeting be a Zoom meeting?
Probably, yeah.
It would have to be, yeah. Talking with Fletcher, it would have been literally of like back TV with him with a mic, select board spread way out and myself and then having the calls come in.
What are the, what are the negative aspects of delaying it, other than a little crunch on the budget?
Hey Russ, the other question I would have, why she's right there, is what happens to the other two departments, when we still have a town meeting, we have all three, we have the school and the fleet and the fire.
Right now, the town is, the town and fire are on, the only two that are, are together right this second. Maybe next year, the school will join us again, but the school is on their own right now. When they get the vote to consolidate, to, to disbar, then it will be back to normal, I would say. But right now, for this year, they're, they're on their own, they've got to come up with their own town report, et cetera.
So, I mean, one thing we should do is ask the fire district whether their opinion on whether delay, how they would like to see the town meeting, it'd be nice to get their input.
Again, I, I'm surprised one town already jumped, but most people, most towns are waiting to hear from the legislative body. And that hasn't come, come up, come up yet, I mean, they're still working on it.
No, they're still so, there's, really, nothing has been satisfied in terms of the vaccine. It's coming, but when everybody else is going to have it is anybody's, it probably will be late, late spring. It won't be February or March.
No, they're talking six months.
So when is the deadline when we have to decide if we're actually going to have it in late February?
Again, the legislative folks told the clerks that they will have information in the, in the middle of January so that you can make a informed decision on how you're going to proceed.
Okay. Well.
Russ, there was a Zoom meeting today with BCLT on that, did you, did anybody you know attend that one?
It's actually tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, you're right, it's the 17th, I'm sorry, yeah.
And I don't know if they're going to have it because of the storm, but I don't, I don't know that.
So that'll sort of be a do or die issue at the next meeting then?
Yes, I'm, I'm assuming, yes.
Okay.
Or we have a special meeting the week after.
Okay. Any more questions? Discussion? Westminster Aqueduct takeover.
It has been brought to my attention that they're going to make a formal request for the town to take over the Westminster Aqueduct. Lou Blanchard is retiring and they are kind of in a flux of what to do next, so they are. It's just an FYI for you to just start thinking about it. Thinking of the questions, you can ask them next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. At some point, Kevin was going to give a little update in our meeting on the financial. Want to do that now, Kevin, or do it under other business?
Oh, happy to get it done, thanks. We had a, briefly, we had our meeting on Friday, which went very well. With Sue, myself, Russell, Kelly and Paul Harlow, Cynthia Stoddard and Darlene Kelly, want to thank everybody for all their incredible input.
Want to thank everybody for all their incredible input. We went over the November tenth memorandum, which was the last meeting with Chad Hewitt in detail, and came up with some good discussion and good recommendations. Now we will take what we did there, and I believe I saw Chad had already pinged back that we just got to get him a date where all of us can get together again and meet with him to go over our what we discussed, and what we would like to see perhaps improved, and any other recommendations that he may have, given everything we went over. And I also, after the meeting, I heard back from BCL, BCLT on other policy implementations. I had sent that to Sue, and once we're done talking with Chad, I thought I would bring those up at the meeting, if that's all right. Okay, and other than that, I, I thought it was incredibly productive, and again, I just want to thank everybody for, for all their input and all their terrific suggestions. Thank you, Sue.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for doing that, I appreciate it. Managers' report.
A couple of quick things that I mentioned last time, town offices will be closed twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and December thirty-first, and January first. In your packets, there is a a grant opportunity from Wyndham Solid Waste Management to talk about our programs and how we can improve our trash and recycling in town of Westminster. I have signed up for the workshop, and, but it's, again, it's just a more information than anything. That's it.
Words and commissions?
I have nothing to report.
Other business? Okay, date of the next meeting, is that January thirteenth, is that right?
January thirteenth.
Six-thirty. We'll see how, where we are, but, okay.
I have one thing before we adjourn, though. I need you, Cynthia's still on.
Yep.
Yeah.
Wait, I need a phone number so I can get in touch with it.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Three-seven-six?
Just a minute, yeah.
Six-two-two-six.
Two-two-six, thank you.
You can, do you text? Because you can just text us where to pick it up.
No, I don't text.
Oh, come on, okay.
I'm going to teach him his email one of these days.
Luminaries, we're picking up luminaries. I don't want people to think we're doing weird.
I can drop it off at your house, because that's what I've been doing anyway, so.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, Sheldon, I, I did talk to Dave Gorm, he's, he does have a little, it's a Zuzu, you know, so it's a low-profile truck that we can borrow. If you want to do that, you could put tables in it, it's like a twenty-foot long, and it's real low to the ground.
Well, I think we're, at this point in time, we're going to be back into the fire station with a trailer, so
Okay.
we're going to be all right if we can, it's just a question of getting somebody from the fire department to open up when people come in with their bags or whatever, and a lot of people are putting the bags out themselves, or some of them are anyway, so.
We want to bring ours to the, we could just bring them to the fire department, we're done, that's how that works?
Uh, yep, or you can put them out.
But, when are, can I, this is, this is the recorder, when are we bringing them to the fire department? I'm sorry.
Good question.
I thought that there was a meeting last.
Depending on who you talk to, this, there's supposedly somebody always at the fire, or almost always at the fire station, but that's not necessarily true, so. And I talked to Jim Brout about it, so we're gonna it'll be in the last, this last week of, before the thing is when we're gonna we don't normally do the bags and the luminaries until a couple of days before we put them out anyway, for the most part, so.
All right. Go ahead, Millie.
Ask who seconded the minutes.
Way back then, who seconded the minutes?
Greg.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Millie and Sheldon, for doing the luminaries, you appreciate it very much. It'll work out, it'll be great.
It'll be, it'll be fine.
Yep. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Toby, seconded by Craig, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for coming.